Okay, it is 7:00 PM and the city attorney informs we have a necessary number for quorum, more than a quorum, so that's good. So I would like to call to order the rigor meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, March 3rd, 2025. And I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we find ourselves in a world that has a lot of discussion and turmoil and moving parts to it, we are ever thankful for the quality of the government that we enjoy at the local level. We are surrounded by sister agencies in our community from the school board, the park district, the library board, township, all whom are here to work with the city and support us, and we support them in doing the good things that are needed to be done for the good people of Batavia. As always, in invocation, I'd like to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask for special blessings shined upon them and all the men and women who are serving with them. Tonight also, we want to ask for direction and ideas and vision and support of each other and observations of dissent if there need to be by the members of the city council as they make the items of business official on our agenda. Tonight, as always, we just finalize this by asking for a special blessing shone upon all those in our community who are sick or infirmed in some way or shape or form, and we just ask that their health and their requests to become better are answered in a very quick time. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Who would like to volunteer to do the Pledge of Allegiance? Alderman Mike?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll. Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger? We have thirteen. Thirteen out of fourteen, so we obviously have all the necessary votes and people in the room to do the business. Moving to item number four, reminder, if you're going to come and speak to the city council, we ask that you come up to the podium and use the microphone as this is being recorded, and if you don't use that, people watching on TV and probably some of us in this room can't hear what you're saying because you need to be on the microphone, so appreciate that if you're going to speak with us. Moving to five, any items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda by the council? Nobody's told me of anything. All right, then, moving to item number six, which is presentation for approval of the consent agenda. Alderman Beck?
Yes, Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for February 11th, 2025, and for approval, the February 28, 2025 payroll in the amount of $1,073,792.57, the accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,187,395.76, the city council minutes for February 17th, 2025, the city council executive session minutes from January 21st, 2025 for the purchase of real estate, resolution 2025-32-R authorizing the mayor to execute a mutual release of claims with Vega Building Maintenance for termination of renewable contract, ordinance 2025-12 annexing property at 02 South 690 South Redant Road, motion to approve a request for proposals for removal and relocation of the Tin Shop building at 106 North River Street, motion to approve a request for proposals for demolition, backfill, grading, and seating of the Tin Shop building site at 106 North River Street, resolution 2025-30-R authorizing purchase of software server licenses from SHI International, ordinance 2025-15 amending the 2025 wage and salary ordinance for non-collective bargained employees in public works changes. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second? Alderman Beck, second, Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll. And at the record effect that all one person, Vogelsinger, has just entered the meeting, so we are complete. Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Here.
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Motion to approve fourteen yes, no no's, none absent. All right, moving to item seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody tonight have anything they wish to bring up? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Moving to item eight, approval of a Class B1 liquor license for Crishada Home LLC, an LLC to be located at the Windmill Food and Wine Spirit Store at 336 East Wilson Street. Owners, Madel Patel and Ashley Patel, and I think they're sitting in the audience. Does anybody in the council have any comments or questions you'd like to ask? I would like to make a couple of comments on this one. This is the building that sits right at Prairie and Wilson Street on the southwest, yeah, southwest corner. It's one where we just had all the work done on the railroad track and everything right next to it. And I think I'm pleased that in talking with these gentlemen, they seem to have the idea they're going to do some nice things to the building in the near future. And I just want to say that building has become kind of the eyesore of the east side. And it's, I have a lot of people in town ask me, why does the city allow that building to stand there in the condition it is? And I knew we were in conversations with these gentlemen about coming in and opening up kind of a combination store that's going to sell several varieties of services. Would one of you guys be willing to get up there just a minute and talk to the council about what you're going to do up there?
I currently own two liquor stores with Market in Chicago. So I was in the area and I looked at this location, 7-Eleven, used to be here, and somehow they closed down in last summer. And I found out information from my landlord, and I approached him, I said, I want to open a similar store at the same place. But it was a little hard to work with the landlord because the building, the way it is, I don't think he'd take care of it or anything. So he just told me, just go to the city of Batavia and talk to them, you know, if they approve, I don't have any problem to lease you the place. So I came to the city and talked to them, and they said, fill out the application. I did the background and everything, and based on the experience, I like the town of Batavia, and I want to open a store with carrying food, wine, spirit, lottery, like packaged food, tobacco, with bread, eggs, soda, coffee, donuts. It's like a convenience store to help the community. And any other question you guys want to ask me?
From our conversation, I would describe what you're talking about as kind of a large-scale convenience store. You're going to do a lot of different things in there and kind of checking you out. You do have a good record at the places you've been in Chicago, so I have no reason not to support this. But I just wanted the council to kind of hear firsthand because I think most of these aldermen have gotten comments from their constituents or citizens of Batavia in the last couple of months as that place has sat there vacant. And it doesn't, it's kind of almost an eyesore for people to drive into Batavia, and it's going to be good to have you kind of do some repainting and liven the place up and fix it up and turn it into a very viable location to have a convenience store at. So, anybody in the council have any questions or comments? Alderman, Lancy?
Yeah, you had mentioned, obviously, right off the bat, you didn't think, and maybe I misunderstood, but are you saying you don't think the owner takes care of the building?
I mean, yeah, I looked at the site and there is like, everything is vacant except the pizza place, so I told them-
I live right next to it. So I would tend to agree with you there. And so my question is, is why would you still want to move in there? And have there been any concessions made with the owner that they will do X, Y, and Z? Or how's that working out?
My goal is to like, first, I talked to him if he wants to sell the property.
Right.
And then, one point, he said, yeah, he wants to sell the property, and we made a contract. I spent $5,000 to hire attorney and everything, and I don't know what happened after one week. I went to India for three weeks for vacation, and when I came back and I asked him, like, okay, let's get the paperwork started, you know? And he's like, oh, now I changed my mind, I want to sell it to my brother-in-law. I don't want to sell it to nobody else. And then I told him, okay, if you want to sell it to your brother-in-law, that's fine, but first you told me you want to sell it, you don't want to sell it, now you're telling me you want to lease the place, and like, you have to be serious, you're doing business here, you know? He's like, okay, I can give you a right of refusal in the lease, like, if he sells in the future, he's going to give me a first opportunity. But my goal was to buy the whole property, fix it up, like, I think he recently replaced the roof because I think city make him require that, and there was like a fire problem over there, so I think he got to fix all that stuff, too.
Took a long time to get the pavement redone, it's, yeah, I would say been a nightmare at the very least.
Same thing, I was talking with him back and forth like almost five, six months, but he wasn't serious for anything. So my goal was to like, take the whole building, fix it, and rent the place, and makes it look nice. But since if I get the license, like, after everybody's approval, even if he doesn't do anything, but I see the place looks so dark, like, I pass by right now, like, the parking lot is dark, there is no lights or nothing, I'm going to spend my money and light up the store and make a nice scale store inside, not like, put the lights around the windows, nothing like that, you know? Because I have a two-story in Lakeview area right by the Wrigley Field.
Okay.
And nice and professional, you know, like, we take care of it, you know, people come, give us a good review, we hire the community people, and it helps everybody, you know, the customers, the community people helps us, so I want to make it look nice in the city.
Well, I definitely look forward to it and look forward to you being in town. I think, you know, that 7-Eleven has been missed by those on the east side since it's been gone. You know, I know myself frequented it for random things all the time and definitely miss it, so look forward to visiting your spot, look forward to having you in Batavia, and hopefully you end up with that building at some point.
And I'm not just saying this just to get the license or anything, once, if you take the place, we're going to fix it nicely, and you guys can come and look at it if any problem, just let us know, say, hey, you were saying this in the meeting just to have a business? No, not just for like that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
What is the name, oh.
Alderman Baron?
I was going to ask what the name of your other locations are.
What's the name of the place you mean?
Of your other locations.
I have two locations, I have one called Lakeside Market, and the other one is Shared and Liquor.
Are you just taking the, where the 7-Eleven location is, or are you looking to expand into some of the other locations that were in that mall?
No, just the 7-Eleven location, that's the only space that he agreed to lease right now.
Are you going to have a Slurpee machine?
Yeah, we're going to put Slurpee machine there.
That's big for the kids there.
We will put the Slurpee machine there.
Okay, thank you. All the kids' Slurpees are coming back.
Kids aren't small anymore.
I want to thank the city council for jumping in on the conversation here, there was a lot of questions about that, that I think we got a lot of answers now, and hopefully you see why we've tried to encourage this along the best we can, and I'm optimistic that once these two gentlemen get there, that'll turn the corner for some other folks to join them and be in the line there, so we'll get back to where it should be, because the traffic numbers and everything are very supportive of a business, it's just you've got to know what you're doing running the business, and I think we got some people that do, so I appreciate that. So do we need, we got a motion, a second? Okay.
I think, no, we don't have one yet.
We have, no motion.
So moved.
Motion by Sulfah, second by, who was, somebody over here?
Vogelsinger.
Vogelsinger?
We raced.
Kirk call the roll. Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Motion to approve fourteen yes, no no's, and none absent. Well, welcome to Batavia, gentlemen, here in business. I'll be signing your license tomorrow. Moving then to item nine is a presentation by Batavia Women's, is this the one for the Women's Club?
No.
No, what?
Active Transportation.
Oh, Batavia Active Transportation, please.
I'm Regan Bull, I'm the chairperson for the Active Transportation Advisory Commission, and going to give you a little quarterly update tonight. It'll be brief, we don't have any big projects to present or anything like that, but we'll definitely fill you in on what we're at and what we're doing so far this year. So, last time I was up here, I talked about the newness of our membership. We have almost a complete turnover in the last year of our members, of commissioners for that, for this, and we're going to have one more coming up in May. Long-term council or long-term commissioner Steve Erickson will be leaving us, he's moving up to Minnesota, and so we're going to have another open position coming up very soon, which will leave only Jared Heck as our only long-term member so far, and then we'll be turning him over also in the fall. So, anyway, as the commission continues to turn over and new members, one of the things that the commission decided to take a look at was the ordinance that created the commission back in 2023, that was ordinance 2335, that formed the commission as it is now. So we're familiarizing ourselves because a lot of us weren't there when that ordinance was formed, and we're going to build off of that and try to establish a new mission statement. Not going to change the commission, we're not going to change our purpose, but we want to give the newer members kind of an understanding of what we're all about and what we're doing for the community here. So we'll be hosting, we already had one special council meeting last Monday at Sturdy Shelter, and we're going to continue to do that for the foreseeable future, just to try to establish what our goals are, what we can do to help the city move forward with Active Transportation and keep working on that. So that's one of the things we're doing. But more specifically, actual projects that we're working on right now, particularly with the Public Works team, Gary and his team have been always great to work with, but a big one for us this year is the bike-friendly community application. So that's something that we have to renew every few years, and that's a lot of legwork on both the Public Works and even our commission to help the Public Works Department make that application. So we're hoping to pursue bronze level again this year. I know our goal ultimately in the 10-year plan is to hit silver level, but this is just another step to keep going. So hopefully by June, hopefully, but by June, we'll have that application submitted and establish Batavia as another bronze-level bicycle community for another year, so looking forward to that, and all the help from Public Works on that. Another Public Works collaboration is the new pedestrian camera monitor system, I think that's the right term, but one of the council meetings I spoke at back in the fall, the council actually approved this project going forward and the cost for it, and we have now, through Gary letting us know from Public Works, that we have now actually obtained these cameras and monitors, and we're going to use these to monitor traffic areas for pedestrians and bicyclists. So we're, as a commission, we're brainstorming ideas of where we should put these cameras and monitors, how is it going to benefit future projects, and kind of where is our actual bicycle and pedestrian traffic actually at throughout the city? So these are mobile units, they're not permanent, we'll be able to move them around. We're looking at areas primarily that we haven't monitored yet, we're not going to track obvious things like the bike path. But we are kind of interested in areas such as Republic Street where we're going to put in the sidewalk for walking to school. Is that something that we should be monitoring to substantiate that project for the sidewalks, or is there other things? So we have three of these cameras, and we're still reviewing where we're going to put those. So hopefully by the next commission meeting in a couple of weeks, or actually next week, we'll have a more defined location where we're going to put those. If you or any community members have any suggestions at all, we're completely open, so please let the commission know if you have any particular areas that you think we should focus on with that project. Let's see. Oh, the last thing that we're kind of focusing on again, it's a new group, but we're looking to be out in the public a lot more. So hopefully you'll see the Active Transportation Commission get out a little bit more at some of our own public events. We're looking to get a new EZ up with some new signage, some new banners, some swag with our names and stuff on it, maybe stickers, things like that. So we'd look to make more of a presence in the community this year, starting with some of the farmer market things and stuff like that. And again, if the council has any suggestions or throughout the years have any events that you think maybe the Active Transportation Commission should attend, please let us know. We would love any kind of suggestion or thing we want. We're going to build a calendar that should be accessible to the public to see maybe where we're going to be, and hopefully that's also receptacle to make suggestions back to where, you know, student communities and projects would like to see us, so. So like I said, it's a bit of a brief statement or update this quarter, but I would also like to recognize Gary Holm from Public Works. He's been instrumental in helping out the commission through the years, he gives us a lot of insight on our weird concepts that we think of, he also pulls us back in when we really get to talking about things that we would like to see. But he also makes us feel like we're really a big part of the community, because things that we say to Gary, he actually implements, and it makes us feel like our opinion actually matters. So we appreciate all that Gary's been doing for us, we know he's going on to hopefully bigger and better things in the near future, but we look forward to continuing working with the Public Works Department and all that, so. With that, like I said, it was a brief update, but if anybody has any questions for us or anything?
I have a bunch of questions, not a bunch of questions, but regarding the cameras, are those something that's like higher up, or is it lower?
Gary can help us elaborate a little bit on the actual technicalities of it, I know one of them is mobile, at least one of them is a mobile device, some of them will be semi-permanently mounted, and yeah, they will be, I think, above like the average height of a person, but-
They come out of the strategic plan that council established, and it really is in support of pedestrian and bicycle counting. So that, it's, several council members have asked even in the past about data behind counting, you know, how do we support, Regan mentioned, how do we support a new sidewalk that goes in, and what numbers do we know that the sidewalk is effective? That's what these are, these are counting devices. And one of them, you attach to a pole, you, they have to be, they do have to be at level, though, because you're actually passing through a beam, so they can't be way up high, because they're not, they're not cameras in that sense, they're really counting devices.
And the reason why I ask this, recently, the Batavia Park District took down a tree in one of the parks, and they put a sign with a QR code that residents could go scan that and took them to the website to talk about the project. And I thought that that would be something kind of cool with this type of project, to let people understand, you know, what is this QR code, and it could take them to it. I know it's another project site for you.
Yeah, I'm only, and IT folks in the audience can maybe chime in, I'm just a little leery of QR codes because people can go put a sticker on top of them with a different QR code, and suddenly your information on your project leads people to a different link altogether. So I'm, we're a little more hesitant to deploy QR codes now out in public.
I hear that, it was temporary, and I don't think that they had any issues at the park with that.
No, I'm sure 99% of the time you're not going to have any issues, but the first time you have an issue, 14 of you will certainly hear about it.
Public notice is definitely, I completely agree, public notice in any shape or form of this project, I think, would be great. I mean, I've seen cameras on Van Norwick that were set up for traffic monitoring, and I know even that kind of stirred a little controversial, you know, theories and whatnot of what those cameras were for, so we're putting sensors or things around, I think some kind of public notice should be provided.
Perhaps instead of a QR code, we could put up a web address for them to go to to learn more.
Thank you for the questions.
That's it.
Okay. That wasn't very many. Anything else?
Yeah, obviously, I like the focus on bike and pedestrian, but I know one of the reasons we went with Active Transportation as the name of the committee was kind of looking at everything, so looking at other public transportation, other options that are out there. Have you guys started to look into other things and how we can, I know Pace keeps on pulling back, and they're not necessarily doing things, but it'd be nice to see some conversations around other forms of transportation as part of the committee.
Yeah, I mean, for example, to your point, one of the things we talk a lot about is e-bikes, I mean, they're not going away, they're part of the community wherever you are, whether they're rentals or privately owned, so not to use the word negatively, but regulations and the needs of an e-bike user are something that we consider quite often. So yeah, I didn't mean to, you know, put everybody in a compartment with, you know, just biking and walking, but of course, we look at it all. So yeah, it's something that is part of the Active Transportation, yes, very much. Yes?
That's a pretty nice segue into my question here. With the, with our reconnaissance, our observation cameras, what sort of granularity are we going to get? Are we going to be able to tell the difference between an e-bike, a pedestrian, a bicyclist, and a car, or are we going to kind of get like pedestrian?
I'm going to throw that back to Gary again, because that was one of the questions even we had as the commission.
Again, these will be directed towards pedestrian pathways, so we're not trying to pick up vehicular traffic. So whether someone's riding a bike at 10 miles an hour or riding an e-bike at 10 miles an hour, I don't know that the system's going to be able to tell you the difference between that, because they're going to have to physically look at the bike to see what kind of bike you're riding.
Yeah, the reason I ask is that, you know, Republic and North Avenue, you're going to capture two e-bicyclists every single morning and every single afternoon, right? Like, I see them coming every day, but they're in the street, right, and they're going 20 to 30 miles an hour, they're definitely going much faster than a pedal, and I'm just wondering, because again, yeah, as you mentioned, e-bikes are sort of, they're bikes, but they're also a little bit not bikes, it'd be kind of interesting to get at that, but if we can't get it, I sort of understand.
Yeah, I don't know if this time around that we'll be looking at that kind of granular information, but it is something that we have discussed as a commission. You know, if there's a certain path that e-bikers prefer compared to, you know, regular cyclists or walkers, yeah, we would definitely love that information, but maybe it'll lead to that someday, I'm, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you for your update.
Thank you, yeah, hopefully we'll have a little bit more, some a little more definitive, especially on the camera project next time we update you, so thank you.
We look forward to your next return.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving then to the chamber. Margaret?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for letting me give a chamber update. We have exciting things coming up. I've mentioned each time that I've been here the last couple of months, the Inspire celebrations coming up, where we honor our Citizen of the Year, Bob Hubbard, and the Spirit of Batavia Award, Batavia Main Street, and the Peace Bridge Initiative is receiving the Batavia Impact Award. It will be April 24th at Revelry 675. We will also honor our Ole Award winners, which is a special tribute to businesses that have made significant investments and improvements in Batavia. For new construction commercial, we will be awarding Wazio Orthodontics and Dave's Hot Chicken with an Ole Award. For new commercial remodel, we will be giving an award to Prime Truck and Trailer Center and Geneva Winery. And finally, new construction industrial award goes to Arco Murray Design. I know many of you guys have already registered for the event, so we can't wait, and we look forward to celebrating with you. I want to also let you know about a new initiative that the chamber is starting, it's called Chamber Eats. Chamber Eats is a monthly program that we are doing to support our Batavia Chamber restaurants throughout the year. We will promote our restaurants by encouraging both chamber members and community members to enjoy the diverse culinary- to enjoy the diverse culinary offerings in our area. Each month, we will feature a different chamber member restaurant. Throughout the month, we encourage our chamber members and community to visit the featured restaurant for breakfast, lunch, or dinner. Diners can enter a drawing for $25 in Batavia Chamber bucks and a $25 gift certificate from the participating restaurant by dropping in a business card or a contact information card in the Chamber Eats box at the restaurant. And the winner will be chosen at the end of each month. Taco Dolly is going to be our first featured restaurant this month, starting today, well, starting March 1. They're at 842 North Randall and have a delicious, authentic Mexican food. There's something there for everyone. And we will also have our Out to Lunch with the Chamber at the featured restaurant. So we will be at Taco Dolly on, what day? On Thursday, March 27 at noon. So that's a drop-in. Anybody could join us. So come enjoy the restaurant and our chamber staff. I want to mention we have some scholarship opportunities. The Batavia High School senior can apply for one of our four, they can apply for all of them, actually. We have four $1,000 scholarships focusing on entrepreneurship, women in business, career and technical education, and chamber business contributors. The application is open through March 28. So if you know a senior, please encourage them to apply. I also want to mention our business scholarships. Those are the Grow Your Business scholarships that we do in partnership with the Fox Valley Entrepreneurship Center. Currently, U+ Medical Aesthetics is going through the program. They're getting $10,000 worth of consultation for their business. And we have a rolling application. So if anybody, if you know another business that's interested, please have them go to our website. The application is featured on there, Grow Your Business Scholarship. I wanted to extend a warm welcome to the businesses that joined the chamber this month: Express Employment Professionals, True Knack Graphics, and Miller Resource Group. Please check out these wonderful organizations on our website. And I wanted to highlight just a couple of our upcoming events. On March 7 at 8:00 AM, we have the Tri-City Legislative Update at the Geneva History Museum. We're doing it in conjunction with the St. Charles and Geneva Chambers. There, the Illinois Chambers Executive Director and Government Affairs Keith Wheeler will be presenting. On Tuesday, March 11, we will have a webinar, Is Your Business Boomer Friendly and Dementia Friendly? That's online at 11:30. You could register for it to get the Zoom link on our website. We have a ribbon cutting for Beyond Physio, Beyond Physio. She's a physical therapist in the Challenge Building. The ribbon cutting is Wednesday, March 13 at 4:00 PM. We have another awesome webinar called Quiet Quitting Versus Loud Retaliation. You can sign up for that on our website. And we have our networking at Geneva Winery on March 19 at 4:30 to 6:00 PM. And if you want to know more about using your chamber benefits, you could join our Chamber Membership 101, being held March 21 at 8:00 AM. Before I introduce my esteemed guest, I want to show the, I mentioned the OLE Awards and OLE videos. My guest tonight is the media production company that makes these videos. This is featuring Mocha. They won an award last year. And this
Hi, my name is Scott Miller, and welcome to Mocha, Batavia. So at Mocha, Batavia, our aim is to have high-quality espresso, coffee, and tea drinks. They're all customizable. We come out and take your order out at your car. That's how we do. And we try to have a speedy service. We try to interact with our customers. We get to know them. We have a lot of regulars. And we just wanted to provide great coffee drinks. So our first location is in North Aurora, and we learned a lot from that construction process. We wanted to build instead of just rent a space because we wanted the flow to really fit our business model. And efficiency and speed is a big part of that. And so that's what we had in mind when we designed it. One of the things we learned from North Aurora is that we really need some storage space. And so this location, we made the kitchen just a little bigger, and we put some storage space in a separate room by itself, and it makes all the difference. We put a sidewalk in so that people could get to the walk-up window pretty easy. If you're out jogging or have a stroller, a bike. And we also wanted to have a place that had enough space for some live music. We think this location is a good spot for the high school. It's easy to get in and out of this location regardless which direction you're going on Randall, or Wilson, or Main Street. So thank you to the chamber and to the city of Batavia for giving us this opportunity and considering us for the OLE Award. It's certainly a privilege. We really appreciate it. And it's been great working with everybody. And Jeanette and I both thank you very much.
So Mocha's a great business, but I wanted to show this video because it really highlights Andrew's amazing skills with his videography and his interviewing. So let me introduce Andrew Schoens. He's owner of Both &amp; Pictures.
Hi, everyone. My name is Andrew Schoens. My company is called Both &amp; Pictures. I know some of you, I've probably interviewed a few of you. I do video production, photography, and now I'm starting to get into design as well. So it's kind of an evolution of business, becoming more of like a full-service type agency. I started my business eight and a half years ago. I stood in this room, I think in 2017. Donald Trump was president then too, yes. And so I've been fortunate through the community that, and through the chamber and everything, that's been very helpful for my business and slowly grown over the years. I haven't, I mostly add like contractors as needed and stuff. But in the future, I'm looking to grow more. Some of the clients that I work with over the years, obviously the city of Batavia. So you see some of my work on the website. I did a video for the fire department as well, recruitment video. I do a lot of work with the chamber as well. Another client of mine that promotes this area as well as Aurora Convention and Visitors Bureau. So I do a lot of videos for tourism and stuff up and down the Fox River, from Geneva all the way down to Oswego, Yorkville. You may have seen some of that work on socials and stuff. So I've been in Batavia for 18 years. My sons are graduating Batavia High School this year. And I've seen this community grow a lot over the past 18 years. And probably more so even since I started my business. I get to interact with a lot of small business owners throughout the Fox Valley and my clients. And I often hear that now more than ever, people talk about Batavia, which is really cool. So I hope that some of the work that I do is encouraging people to come to this community. That's very important to me, to connect businesses with people and connect businesses and their stories with potential customers and people that want to live in this community. Yeah, that's about all I got right now. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions?
No questions.
What's your company website?
It's bothandpictures.com. And I can give you a card, too.
Right, thanks.
Yeah. One of the things, too, I did want to mention is, since I started my business, I have always offered a 50% discount for nonprofits. It's been very important to me. Over the years, I've worked with multiple, some in town, including Water Street Studios, Casa, Kane County. Most recently, I'm working with the Boys and Girls Club of North Central Illinois. Again, those are very important stories that need to be told. And so if you know of any nonprofits that need help in fundraising and that sort of stuff, video is a very important tool for that. So send them my way.
On a related note, do you ever work with high school with any students as interns or anything like that?
I've done some work in the high school, but not so much as interns. Actually, one who graduated from Batavia High School in 2020, he's doing a little bit of work with me right now. He's flying some drone work with me. So yeah, I'm looking for people that are interested in this career. I have over 25 years of experience doing it. So that's one way that I want to expand my business is by bringing in people that I can mentor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I guess we're going to have a proclamation for Women's History Month, and Alden Beck is going to read that. And when she gets done reading it, I'm going to give a framed copy of it to the members of the Batavia Women's Club who are fast packing the audience. So we're happy to have them all here, and thank you all for coming. So Alden Beck, you want to start?
Sure. A proclamation. Whereas Women's History Month is a time to honor and celebrate the invaluable contributions of women to our society, history, and culture. And whereas the city of Batavia, Illinois, has been profoundly shaped by the remarkable women whose legacies continue to inspire and guide us. And whereas Mary Todd Lincoln, the First Lady of the United States, found solace and strength in Batavia at Bellevue Place during a challenging period of her life, bringing national attention to women's mental health and asylum conditions in the 19th century. And whereas Dr. M. Ella Whipple, a pioneering physician and educator born in Batavia, dedicated her life to medicine and was an active advocate for temperance and women suffrage. And whereas the Batavia Public School District honors the legacy of esteemed women educators by naming schools after them, including Alice Gustafson, a dedicated educator who served as teacher and principal in Batavia from 1922 to 1956; Eldora Hoover, whose legacy is honored in Hoover Wood School for her commitment to education and volunteer efforts in helping immigrants learn English; Grace McQuain, who devoted 59 years to educating the youth of Batavia; and Louise Condi White, a Batavia native, whose career and education spanned from 1894 to 1938, leaving a lasting impact on the community. And whereas Kate Raftery played a pivotal role in preserving Batavia's history by founding the Batavia Depot Museum, ensuring the restoration of the historic Chicago-Burlington and Quincy Railroad Depot, and safeguarding the city's past for future generations. And whereas Peg Bond, a dedicated community leader and philanthropist, whose legacy includes the Peg Bond Center, a beloved pavilion along the Batavia River Walk that continues to enhance public spaces and bring the community together. And whereas Batavia is home to numerous successful women-owned businesses spanning industries from manufacturing to retail to restaurants, contributing significantly to the local economy and community vibrancy. And whereas the city of Batavia staff and city council include women in roles across all departments, with many serving in top leadership positions, reflecting the city's commitment to inclusivity and excellence in public service. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Shulkey, mayor of the city of Batavia, do hereby proclaim March as Women's History Month in the city of Batavia, and encourage all residents to celebrate and recognize the extraordinary achievements of women in our community, past and present. I move we approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
Motion and second for the approval of the proclamation. Kirk, call the roll.
Raza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Sopa.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Just approved. Before I invite the Women's Club up, I know who I'm supposed to invite, but I want to tell a couple of history stories about the Batavia Women's Club that I know because of my roles that I've had in the community over the years. One of the places that you would never think of the Women's Club being very tightly connected is the Fire Department. Because for many years, we didn't have any women firemen. It was all men that were running the Fire Department. But one of the things we had, starting in 1947, a gentleman by the name of Frederick Bud Richter got appointed to be the Fire Chief. And he was a full-time chief, and he only had one fireman on duty with him each day at the fire station. So there was only two guys there. And so Richter used to say that they had three trucks to clean, and they got the trucks cleaned, and they were looking for something to do. So one day, some ladies showed up and said that they would like to find some way that they could provide some toys for kids at Christmas time. And Richter said, well, if you can bring me some broken toys, I can get myself and the duty man to repair these toys. So the women came down, and quickly what the women found out was that the toys they were bringing, many of them were dolls that didn't have any clothes on them. So Richter put the call out, and he knew somebody in the Women's Club and said, would there be somebody in the Women's Club that would make toys or make clothes for the dolls? So the next thing he says, he knows there's five or 10 ladies down there measuring the doll's legs and everything else. And they outfitted all these young lady dolls with clothes. That was the Batavia Women's Club. Well, now Richter not going to let you just do that once and get away with it. He started collecting those dolls all year long. So the second year the ladies came, they had probably three times as many dolls to put clothes on as they did the first time. But the Batavia Women's Club rose to the occasion. So he said he got them down there interested enough that they started asking questions about the stuff in the Fire Department. And in 1954, he said to them, you know, what we really need in this town is a Fire Department Rescue Squad truck where we would carry all the first aid equipment and the resuscitator and whatever have you. But the city doesn't have any money for it, and I'm thinking maybe we should have a fundraiser and see if we can raise the money. So right away, two groups stood up and said, we'll help you raise the money. One was the Batavia Rotary Club, and the other one was the Batavia Women's Club. And the Batavia Women's Club, I believe the first rescue truck cost $3,484, which in 1954 was a lot of money. But it came totally unequipped, and the boys had to get in and build a cabin and tree and everything else. But here comes the Women's Club, as I'm led to believe, that first time when they're going to buy it, they brought $1,000 in and gave it to the Fire Department to help put that rescue truck on the throat. So Richter retired in 1978 as the Fire Chief. And I was on the Fire Department then. And so I got involved in his going away thing. And one of the things that, because he was talking about, he had got that rescue truck going. And one of the things I did then was I went back in the records of the Batavia Fire Department from the day we got it delivered, which I believe was in 1955 through 74, 75. It was about a 20-year run. And what I was able to determine was, is that that rescue truck had responded in Batavia over almost 3,000 times. It had been on the street aiding people with problems, health issues, heart attacks, whatever have you. We didn't have that before, but because a group like the Batavia Women's Club stepped forward and donated all this money, that they, so we're honoring a group here tonight, or we're going to give this proclamation to a group here tonight, that really has a history behind them of doing some really nice things for Batavia. You know, and Batavia has been very, very fortunate to have people like that. And we've had people see that they're doing it. So the next time it came to buy an updated rescue truck in 19, let's see, that would have been about '72, '73. By then, we had the 3,000 calls. But that was a lot of calls for Batavia in that time period. But it was multiple years. But when we had that one, right away, the Batavia Rotary and the Batavia VFW showed up and made major donations to help pay for almost the whole truck. So not to be outnumbered, the Batavia Women's Club at that time said, well, we'd like to buy some of the equipment to go into the truck. So they've always had their very, very best faces on the minds of
You're still competitive that way.
Okay. Well, I'm just sharing this as something that everybody that's sitting here tonight that's a member of this organization should be very proud of the history and those who have gone before you. And I think the community should be very proud of all you today with all the stuff you continue to do and the new ideas and new challenges that get thrown before the community. And the Women's Club has always been one to step up. So I am told we're going to have, somebody's coming up?
Well, we're all coming up.
Well, we're all coming up.
I love it.
You don't raise money for a rescue squad by yourself.
No, you don't. I thought you enjoyed that story.
That's a good story. When, well, I can't use the words I used to say, but you go...
I have to introduce yourself.
I will. Well, just come on in.
Come on up. We've got to get a picture taken here. So we're honored tonight to have Cynthia Kiekefer here with us.
You should not be swatting. Well, I got little Maggie behind me.
So I'm going to present this to you on behalf of the city of Batavia with our sincere thanks. And it tells a lot of the history of women who have really made a difference in the life of this community. But if you'd like to make any comments there...
Sure.
We've got to get you up here to the mic.
First of all, we are so honored, and we are so tickled that, oh, that you thought of us. Because there's a lot of women in this town. When you start talking about the fire department, my knowledge of firemen is that they have to eat and run. And I thought you were going to talk about how women were on the fire department. Because if any group can eat and run, it is this group. We had our meeting this evening, and we were like, "We got to go!" We had our dinner meeting, and then we ran here and came here. You know, when your actions create a legacy that inspire people to do good, to dream more, to be more, to improve themselves, you're a good leader. And we are on, and that's a quote from a wonderful woman. Robert might be able to tell me who that's from. No, because he loves her. Dolly Pardon. Dolly Pardon is benefiting our city as we speak through her library. But it is from these women before us that have created our ability to improve more, to dream, to do these things. It's on their footsteps. And we are here 135 years later. 1892 is when there were 12 women who created this legacy in this town. They set out to start doing things to help their community improve themselves, dream bigger. And here we are 135 years later. So... So this is wonderful. We are 88 women strong right now. Probably over the last 10 to 15 years, we've donated anywhere from $15,000 to $65,000 a year to our community in different ways. And I love our business model. We just, we can pivot. We have money that we save. We are fiscally responsible. So we've had, just in this last month, RSVP, Fox Valley Special Rec, SciTech, have all come to us saying, "Can you help us?" And we've been in the wonderful position to be able to do that because our sum is greater than our individual parts. So on behalf of all of us, and as you can see, that was the past. This is the present and the future. I'm sure many of you recognize a lot of movers and shakers behind me. We have our board here. We have our vice president, Julie. Julie. We have Marcia. God bless Marcia. She is our treasurer. We love her. Our Penny McDowell, who is our public relations director, right here. And we have, who am I missing that I'm not? We have Karen Weiss, who is new to us and is our fundraising member. And also reminds me, 34% of our membership now resides outside of Batavia. So they heard about a good thing, and they're like checking us out. Pardon, Mike?
Inviting the community.
Yes, yeah. So...
And beyond.
And then, you know, we have a lot of women in our club that just are moving and shaking a lot of things. So thank you so much. We are really so touched to have this. And we'll keep it passed around in our homes. We'll take turns. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, sir.
Okay, returning to business. We'll go to item number 12 on the agenda, which is Resolution 2025-029-R, authorizing approval for police authorized tow contracts. Who's got this?
I've got that, Your Honor.
Aldman?
This year, we added a fourth towing company into the rotation. So that'll be something new for us to do. And one of the things that came out of going through this process through the committee of the whole, that we decided that we need to go back and review the qualifications and how we're going to do that in the next round when we go to do that. Because we had quite a bit of discussion involved in adding the fourth contractor to that contract for this round. So three years from now, somebody else will have to decide how they put that together. Or between now and then, we'll figure that out. But what we have before us tonight is for approval for four in-town in Batavia towing contractors. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2025-029-R, authorizing approval of police authorized tow contracts.
Second. We have a motion and second for the approval of the resolution. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Motion approved, 13 yes, 1 no, none absent. All right. Moving then to item 13, which is Resolution 2025-033-R, authorizing approval of a budget amendment in the amount of $113,507 for the Public Works Capital Fleet budget. Who's got this one?
I've got one, Your Honor. This is a budget amendment to move money in so that we can purchase a truck that we're just paying... This basically pays for the chassis. One of the issues that we've had over the past several years is not being able to get what we have budgeted for. I believe, are we still too short, Gary, of what we wanted to order two from last year and then moving this one in because it's available? So that's one of the issues that we've dealt with, is trying to figure out, you know, what year we can actually get, what we can attain, and is it the right thing that we wanted? And so this time, we're just buying the chassis because it is available. Hopefully, we'll be able to have that. I don't know if that's late this year that we get that one, and then possibly get the body on it next year. So that'll be back here next year. So basically, I think this money, even though it is a budget amendment, was not spent in the last year on the other trucks that we wanted to order that were in the budget. So this is a carryover, but will require a budget amendment because it wasn't something we were planning on doing this year. So any questions? Okay, I'll say we should approve Resolution 2025-33-R, authorizing approval of budget amendment in the amount of $113,507 from Public Works Capital Fleet budget.
Second. Wolf second. And Solfa for the approval of Resolution 2025-033-R. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to item 14, which is Resolution 2025-034-R, authorization to purchase a one-truck chassis from Rush Truck Center of Springfield, Illinois.
The motion that I would make, and this is for the truck chassis alone, and then we'll take, you know, possession of that, probably send it right to the body company to have the rest of the work done on it. And it's through the state purchase program, so it is something that we don't have to go out to bid for.
Moved by Wolf, seconded by Solfa for the approval of item 14 for the purchase of one truck chassis from Rush Truck in Springfield, Illinois. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Motion's approved. All right. Moving then to item 15, which is authorization execution of a site host agreement with Batavia Schools for Level III EV fast chargers. Who's got this? Aldman and Wolf?
And this is a thing that came, one of the good things that came out of the SEJA Act from the state of Illinois. This is funded through a grant through the Climate and Equitable Jobs Act, or SEJA. And that provides the funding and installation and maintenance of this EV charging stations. They'll be located out at the high school, available 24/7. And I think we're going to work on an agreement with the school district as far as maintaining them and how they are used, you know, on the school property during school and during the regular part of the year, other part of the year. No questions? I will make the motion that we approve Resolution 2025-38-R, authorizing execution of a site host agreement with Batavia Public Schools for Level III EV fast chargers.
Second.
By Wolf, who seconded?
Beck.
Oh, Beck. Any further discussion?
Kirk call the roll. Wolf.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Motion's approved. All right. Moving to 16, the administrators' report. Laura.
Thank you, Your Honor. Today, about 35 city employees all participated in a meeting that was hosted by the County Office of Emergency Management. We have been working with them to update our emergency management plan. And today was a full-day session that talked about creating a coordination of operations plan that is, at any time that our provision of essential services to our community is disrupted, either through some type of ransomware or weather event, it talks about what is our plan for making sure that we can continue to provide the essential services that residents and businesses count on us for. And so we're really grateful for our partnership with King County OEM. And they also brought in members from the Illinois Emergency Management Association today as well. We have also submitted a grant application. Our fire stations need some upgrades, and the State Office of the Fire Marshal has grants right now. We have about $350,000 in improvements that are planned to those facilities to replace aging systems and make other upgrades. And so we're hopeful that we will be able to be successful in pursuit of that grants. You will notice that additional signage has been installed on Route 31 along the road diet to inform people that that center line is not to be used for passing, and it's for turning maneuvers only. And then I also wanted to make you aware of a couple of promotions in the Public Works Department. Josh Anderson, longtime Streets employee, has been promoted to crew leader. And that was a vacancy that was created when Dave Hartnett was promoted to be our new Streets superintendent. Also, in this year's budget, was created an electrical engineering technician, full-time. Also, in this year's budget, was created an electrical engineering technician, full-time. We had been having engineering technicians sharing time between the civil engineering and electrical engineering departments, and we're happy to say that the individual who was doing that sharing of time between the two departments was a successful applicant for the electrical engineering technician. Both longtime employees, very happy to see that they're able to advance their careers here at the City of Batavia. And that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Question tomorrow? Thank you. Anyway, have other business from the members of the council? Alderman Beck?
And I'm glad that Regan is still here, because I forgot to mention this when the Act of Transportation update was being held, but in 2018, I participated in the America Walks Walking College, which was a great experience in learning both the policy and the design and all of the tools and tricks that people across the country are using to make their communities more walkable. Applications are open right now, and they're open until March 10th, and wanted to encourage any member up here or out in the community to take part in this really awesome experience. It's about five months long. You get placed in an online group with other activists and leaders from similar-sized communities across the country, and then you have a one-on-one mentor that's working in this field, and just learn a ton through the entire experience, and I found it really valuable. They also allow you to do it in small groups now, which I thought was really interesting, so just wanted to pass that on. And if anybody ever had any questions about America Walks, you can go to americawalks.org and look up the Walking College, or I'm happy to answer any questions, too.
Anybody else?
Your Honor.
Baron?
So I wanted to bring up this evening, last Friday, an email that was sent out by Main Street. I think that as a council, that we need to have a discussion of when we are providing money to nonprofit organizations, what we're going to set around as far as what is allowable and not allowable. We can't control, you know, from their standpoint, the legality of them passing information along, but I think that we need to protect ourselves as a council to make sure that anybody that's taking money from us understands that it needs to be on a nonpartisan basis, and that really, anything that is sent out should not be anything political because it looks bad on our end when we are providing money to an organization and then they're sending out political information.
I just didn't see it. What was posted?
There was, there was two things that were posted on the weekly newsletter. Typically, what Main Street does is they have submissions from businesses to promote the businesses. Whatever they're doing within that, usually, there's no assumption that Main Street is promoting whatever they're doing.
Said banned, or said whatever.
Yeah, so I think where this came from was there was a comment made on, or a post made on Facebook by a former older woman in Batavia that wanted to, you know, bring to light that there was a post for a candidate that was running for contested seat, and it was a meet-and-greet that was at a business. I didn't even notice that in there when I looked through that, the quick look that I took at it, even after I saw the post on Facebook. And what I saw on it was there was one at another business in town that was two candidates, you know, to meet them or, you know, to talk to them, just to promote that. And so that's what I thought it was about, and then I realized after somebody else shared it that, you know, it was further down, there was another post and a picture of the candidate, and it's, you know, was funded by someone, another entity funded it, but the event was happening at a business in Batavia. And so it kind of, to me, looked was a gray area. Is it being promotional? Is it just showing that business? And as far as I know, I'm talking to the city administrator, that the city attorney has advised us that that doesn't cross that line.
Okay.
Right? And rather than, you know, play that game, I think, I'm confident that, I've never seen this before on a Main Street post, didn't even think about it, didn't think about looking at the rules of 501(c)(3) to see if that was something that's not allowed or what was allowed. I probably guarantee us by the time we have our next meeting this month, Beth Walker will be here from Main Street with an updated policy for what they will take in submissions and what they can't take. So I, you know, I feel like this is one of those that got posted on Facebook, which should have been a call to the city administrator and to the director of Main Street. And that would have solved all of it. There wouldn't be any of these questions out there that people can't really answer, or if they just read half of what was there on Friday afternoon, they might not watch city council, they might never hear what the reality is and what happened and what's going to change. So I think it's good that we talk about it. I'm glad you brought it up. I think, you know, we have to make sure that when we do spend money, you know, from the city, that we are very careful about how it gets used out in public. And, you know, when I read it, and like I said, my take on it was, this was a business promoting an event that was happening at their place of business. I don't think it was ever meant or ever even looked at, because I don't think it would have been there if somebody would have looked at it and said, wow, that's a promotion of one candidate versus another. It's a meet-and-greet. I, you know, I have to go back and look and see if I ever had anything like that that got promoted by Main Street or the Chamber.
The thing that concerns me, though, is this business has not even advertised this event going on. They're not even advertising it on their Facebook page or their website.
Right, and I don't know who submitted it. That's the other question that I have. Did the candidate submit it? Did the business submit it because it's their first chance to get that out there? I don't know. There's a couple of questions I would like answered, but I don't see it as, you know, any kind of egregious error or any kind of, you know, plan that, hey, they're trying to sneak this out and get the city to pay for their advertising. That's not what I think happened. But I also think it's something we need to address.
And one thing that I did speak to Laura about is, we have given money out to other organizations, and I do feel that when we do that, that we do need to have a council member on their board to help, just to be part of it. It's almost one of those things, those agreements, that is written in there that if you're coming to us, asking us for money, that we do need to have a council member on the board.
My thought tonight is, we're doing the Women's Month thing, that, you know, we support through the use of this building for, you know, the public forums for candidates, and not just for the City of Batavia, but pretty much anything that's on, you know, a ballot coming up in our city. So there's a lot of things that we do support like that, but it's very partisan, and it's definitely, you know, not slanted towards any one candidate. So I don't know if, Roman, if you want to make any comment of what your thought was on how it was sent out and, you know, how that would fall into the 501(c)(3) rules.
We haven't done, like, an in-depth, like, full research project into it from our initial review of the information that we have. I think it kind of summed up myself and especially Kevin's position on it, that if anything, it's probably a de minimis promotion from them, a de minimis violation of the rules. I don't think it was intentional from what we've seen, but as you mentioned, too, there's other questions to be answered that we may need to address later on. But from the city's perspective, there's nothing inherently wrong that the city wouldn't, itself would need to be worried about. It's more of a policy thing for the council to determine.
And what I was going to say is, as I looked it up, when I did my little quick Google search of it, was if they were to make a campaign contribution, whether it was in-kind or whether it was monetary, then that would be an abject violation right off the bat of the 501(c)(3).
That would be a very clear violation, but there are other ways that you can violate your political activities as well, other than just strictly campaign contributions.
But to me, that would be the one that would be an open and shut case.
Correct, yes.
Would be that.
Yep.
I think Sulfah was first.
Yeah, so I kind of disagree with the de minimis aspect that's being placed on this. In fact, when you look at the actual website and the email that was sent out, it's a full-color picture, it's got the City of Batavia logo, it says "Vote," and then it has an individual's name right underneath it. And it says with the individual's, I don't know, campaign slogan or something, and there's zero promotion of the business. I mean, this not, it's not saying, come check out our business. This is a direct promotion of a candidate. It's right there. It says.
Who did that? So was the business that did that, or was that the candidate who reached out to?
I have no idea, but Batavia Main Street can't do that, is the whole point.
Right, but understood, I think the idea would be...
They should have had a policy in place where they say this is not acceptable and this is a star.
Couldn't agree more. Couldn't agree more. I guess my, a lot of unanswered questions, right?
And then the other thing is, is that with the 501(c)(3), it's, they're prohibited from engaging in political campaign activities. A meeting, saying "Vote" particular candidate with a slogan and then a meet-and-greet, sounds like a politi, it's a direct political campaign activity.
Is this unprecedented? Has nothing like this ever happened before? I obviously haven't been around as long as most, but I don't think nobody's published anything in Main Street that... When I ran... Again, I have no, I got no skin in the game. I'm just curious. I had never even seen this. When I, when I ran and actually had, I don't remember if it was an interview or something that was on BATV, that was also offered to the other candidate to have that same amount of time to be involved on that, because that's something you have to watch as a very fine line of, you know, if you're going to offer time to one candidate, you have to do it for the others.
Yeah, one challenge I see in this is it, you know, the 501(c)(3) status is, that's IRS status. We are not the IRS. That's between sort of a nonprofit and the federal government. We're not them. So I feel uncomfortable sort of diving in and parsing out what is allowed under 501(c)(3) and what isn't, because I'm not a tax expert, and I don't think that's really our role. The question then becomes, does this make us uncomfortable and does this make the usefulness of this nonprofit less to us? I view it as an honest mistake. You know, it does feel like, I think I agree with Alderman Sulfah, that, like, it kind of feels a little political, but is it a mistake? And from a policy perspective, so long as they're appropriately apologetic and they explain themselves well, I don't see a further role for the city council here. Now, if they double down and say, no, we support this candidate over another, well then, yeah, we should probably, from a policy perspective. The 501(c)(3) side of it kind of feels an inappropriate role for the council to be weighing in on what we should be asking is, is this organization still useful to us? Should they still be receiving our money? And for that, so long as, again, they're appropriately apologetic, yeah, I don't see any reason why not.
Like, it's a slippery slope. I would just be careful. We're all paid members of the city as well. Does this mean we should be censored as to what we post, politically or not politically? So we need to be careful of what we wish for.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm reviewing it now, and Jen, you had shown me that before. I don't see it as Batavia Main Street, per se, putting out information. Yes, it is on theirs, but it's, it's along with a lot of other things that are created by different businesses that are put out there. Should it not be there? I don't think it should be there. I agree with that. I don't think it's, I don't want to point the finger at Batavia Main Street and say your funding's in jeopardy, because I don't think that was their intent to take any position on any candidate. So that's my thought.
Oops, I don't want to speak for Main Street. I am on that board. I do, I think it is my understanding that they're working on a policy from this situation that just happened. It was a mistake of, my understanding is, there was no intention behind it. So I'm 100% sure if it had been any other candidate who is running, that some other downtown small business was doing a meet-and-greet, and that small business had reached out to Main Street, like we all do regularly with our monthly events, that they would have reposted that, too. So I don't think this was necessarily an endorsement by Main Street, but my understanding is, is they are working on a future policy, so this discomfort doesn't happen again.
You talked that one pretty well into the ground.
Well, it deserved to be talked about and deserves to have resolution that's public about it, so that way it does, you know, it doesn't happen again.
And I think, you know, if there's, if the city's logo is on that publication...
It's a flag for, and it's actually either the Main Street flag or something. It's one of those, one of those little, like, Starburst Batavia logos. It's not the city logo on it.
Wonder the Mayor's report. I just have a very brief little story to tell. As all of you know, last year, Chief Maza at the Police Department began an education tour for all the senior citizen complexes we have in town about doing business on the computer and what could happen to you, and don't give your credit card numbers away and your driver's license and your social security. And he and his staff went to all six of our senior living communities and gave a program. And I have not, this past week, I've gotten a lot of feedback, very positively, about people's reaction to that program. Case in point, this past week, and this is one of them that they talked about, the city administrator and myself all got text messages saying, "The toll roads notice, this is a toll roads notice of toll evasion. You have an unpaid toll bill on your account. To avoid late fees, pay within 12 hours or the late fees will be increased and reported to the DMV." Well, I, I had just been to the tollway office and updated my credit card, so I couldn't, you know, I knew this was a scam. So then I came back and shared with Laura. Well, she told me that the same thing had happened to her. So I took this down the other end of the building, to the Police Department, and they looked at the phone number that sent it to us, and interestingly, the phone number, I keep dropping this thing here, the phone number begins with a plus 3063, and that's the code to get in from the Philippines. So that just shows you where Batavia got, and then I talked to probably six or seven other people who got this same thing, and they were trying to get their tollway number and somehow helped themselves to that money. So the last couple of days, I've had people come and complain that there's two gas stations in town now that don't want to use money, and they've stopped using those gas stations because the gas station tells them, we want a credit card. And we're not giving no gas station no credit card. We don't even like to use our credit card. And the one was complaining to me that she was out on Randall Road and went to buy it at one place, and they wanted a credit card, so she ended up going to two other places before she finally found somebody that would sell her gas for cash money. And so it's a very interesting moment that we're living in here, because there seems to be a real kind of crime thing or challenge going on in the world of technology with all these people specifically targeting the older people, over 65 years of age seem to be the targets of all this idea of not wanting to use, don't use technology or use it. It's just a very messy situation, and so I'm, we're just sharing that with you that publicly, it's happened to the city administrator and the mayor this past week, and we both got the same caustic, apparently criminal text message from the Philippines trying to get us to disclose our money. So it's out there, and if you're a Batavian and you're watching this show tonight, be cautious if you get something on the computer, because, you know, the Batavia Police Department is a good friend, and it took them about 30 seconds to figure out where this phone call had come from. And I know they've done reports on this stuff and are very much on top of it, and the chief would probably tell me, it's probably every day you're getting something like this, aren't you? Yeah. Very, very common crime in Batavia. It's replaced some of the old-time stuff, but everybody's on the computer these days, so be careful. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I want to...
Motion second. Motion second. Can we call the voicemail? Did you call just the voicemail?
I'm scared. All those in favor?
I'm not.
Hey, somebody...
Pause.